Good evening, everyone. Just want to call the meeting to order for the Oxford City Council for April first, two thousand and twenty five. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and the posting of the agenda?
Mayor MacArthur.
Here.
Councilmember Peralu.
Here.
Councilwoman Perez.
Here.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilman Starr.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temperan.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall, the Oxford Public Library, the city administrative offices, and also on the city's website on Thursday, March twentieth. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Prior to closed session, we will take public comments on the closed session agenda. Can the city attorney have provided a statement prior to the closed session?
The city council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section fifty four, nine fifty six point nine, D one, to confer with its attorneys. The matter being discussed is Hendrix on the behalf of the United States versus J M Manufacturing. The city council will also recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section fifty four, nine fifty six point nine, D four, based on existing facts and circumstances, to decide whether to initiate litigation in one potential case.
Thank you, city attorney.
And Mayor MacArthur, for the record, we do not have any speakers virtually or in person for a closed session. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the city council will recess to a closed session. In a six minute, we will begin the regular meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Perez will be here in about fifteen minutes. For the record. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Just want to call the meeting back to order. We just returned from a closed session item. Just bring it back to order for the Oxford City Council for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Allows the city attorney for any announcements to make following the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. For Item C2, the City Council by a vote of seven to zero has directed the city attorney to initiate an action. The action, the defendants, and the other particulars shall, once then sealed, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the city's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more of the unserved parties, or that to do so would jeopardize the city's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and posting of the agenda, followed by the pledge of allegiance that's going to be led by one of our very own, Jonathan from Pacifica High School?
Councilwoman Basua.
Here.
Mayor MacArthur.
Here.
Councilmember Peralo.
Here.
Councilwoman Perez.
Here.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilman Starr.
Here.
Mayor Protem Teran.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall, the Oxford Public Library, the city administrative offices, and also on the city's website on Thursday, March 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So as we do for each of our city council meetings, we'll be having the opening with the pledge of allegiance from a student. Today's student is from Pacifica High School, and I'll invite him and Ms. Carter up. So Mr. Jonathan de Rosas Hernandez would like to come up and lead us in the pledge, followed by a few minutes of his story and his journey.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is used publicly in which it stands: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Rosas. I'm a junior at Pacifica High School. I've been asked to come and share a little bit about myself. I was born in Mexico and raised in Oxnard. In my freshman year, I was involved in gaining affiliation stuff. I got myself, I got involved in the neighborhood I grew up in. For the two years, I made some bad choices while I was at Pacifica. I got into fights, problems. I didn't really care about my grades as much. Over the last year, I had a talk with Mr. Ramirez. He helped me realize that I have a lot of opportunities that not a lot of kids have. It made me realize how lucky I am, even represent PHS. I learned from my mistakes that it's not always about the fights and problems, mostly to become better for yourself and your family. I really wanted to be, be someone in life, and now I am making the right choices so I can be. I now go to two schools, Condor, Pacifica, and I am a head credits, and I have a 3.2 GPA. I also work in construction for the last two years on the weekends, have learned more about what it takes to work hard. After I graduate, I want to become a firefighter or a welder, and I look forward to being able to provide a good life for myself and my family. Thank you for having me here. I also wanted to thank my mom, dad, my brothers for their love and support. I want to talk to, I want to thank Mr. Ramirez for his patience. I want to thank Ms. Carter for helping me realize who my true friends are. I want to thanks Ms. Steff for helping me. She has given me with my school, work, and always being there. And Mr. Hernandez for always being understanding. Those people have supported me and have never give up on me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. That was amazing. I appreciate you being willing to share your, your journey and all the things that you've seen and experienced. And you, to me, are an absolute example of it's never, ever too late to turn things around and make the choices that are the best choices for you. And only you know what those are. We can't make them for you. Your parents can't make them for you. People can support you in those, in those choices, and I'm glad that you've looked at and been able to make the choice that you think is going to be best for you and has led you on a positive path. And thank you for giving shout outs to all the folks who are here. If you wouldn't mind, we could have them stand and maybe introduce each of the people here with you, including Principal Ramirez, who you gave a shout out to as well. Go ahead and introduce them if you'd like.
My teacher, Ms. Carter. I got my mom, my dad, and Mr. Ramirez, the principal, and my two little brothers.
Thank you so much. And so certainly, the mayor has a certificate here for you that he signed, and we'd love to have you come up here and receive it, and we'll get some pictures.
This is exactly, Jonathan, why we have such high admiration as a community for our educators because of the impact they play. And I certainly know your principal personally, what an outstanding human being and the impact, right? He's here supporting you as a student. And so we're so lucky to have the principal here and people like him representing and leading our city and the educational community. So, so thank you, Chris. Yeah, come on up. Jonathan, we have a really nice certificate for you.
Cheers.
I wasn't planning to speak on this one. I wanted to make it about our student here, Jonathan de Rosas. But it gives me great pleasure to know that the city of Oxnard is recognizing students and gives us, as administrators, the opportunity to recognize one of our students. I have many to recognize that share similar stories like, like Jonathan's, but just something about this young man stood out, and I really want to make sure that I, not only myself, but the city of Oxnard recognizes his, his effort and the success. Just hearing, you know, just realizing where he was at just a couple years ago to where he's at now, I am certain, I'm more than 100% sure that he's going to make big things for us.
I am certain, I'm more than 100% sure that he's going to make big things happen in the near future, make not only his family proud, but the city of Oxnard proud, because that's what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the ceremonial items. The first subject is the presentation of a proclamation designating the week of April 6th through April 12th, 2025 as Library Week in the city of Oxnard. For that, I'd like to call up Kathleen Ashmore, the library director, to receive this proclamation. Thank you, Kathleen. You just left my chair up there.
Thank you to Mayor MacArthur, city council members, and the public for recognizing National Library Week and the importance of the libraries to the communities of Oxnard. National Library Week is an opportunity to reflect on the impact of libraries and the communities they serve, as well as an opportunity to show appreciation to those who do all the amazing work. Libraries are many things to many people. For some people, it's a place they go to explore worlds through the magic of reading. For some people, it's a place that provides tutoring to those who otherwise can't get it. For still others, it's a place to improve their quality of life, whether it's a simple print off of their resume, or a place to take classes for ESL or workplace development. For still others, it's the only social or creative outlet that they have through crafting or exploring interests. And for many, it's a respite, it's a respite from life if it's only for a short time. Libraries are so much more than a place that holds books. We are a third space, hubs of a community, centers for creativity, and a rest for many. I wanted to share some of my team's excellent work over the year. The past year, Oxnard Public Library has had over 167,000 visits to our three locations. We've had over 14,000 people attend 947 programs. We've had over 180,000 items checked out. That includes our physical collection, our digital collection, and our library of things, which includes a C3 REN kit, convection ovens, telescopes, all sorts of fun stuff. We've participated in 63 outreach events, and those are within the community from schools, festivals, and community outreach events. And we're just getting started. We are working very hard to reinvent the library. We're working to improve the layout, the services, the infrastructure for each of our branches, updating our libraries to be more responsive to our communities. Thank you for our continued support, for the work that we do to serve our community here in Oxnard. I'd like to thank you, to the amazing team that's beside me and those who couldn't make it. And if you happen to be in the library this week, please show some appreciation for all of the work they do. Thank you. Yes, names. Erin is our adult services programmer at the main library. Tammy, she does our tech services. She does the collection management, ordering, processing, all that fun stuff. Krista is our children's librarian at Sobel. We have Patty, who is our children's librarian here at Maine. Anita is one of our Friends of the Library members. And then Leah is our, our administrative assistant, and she is the one who runs things. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Absolutely. I can certainly attest to what Kathleen said. I spent many times, well, myself, when I was in high school, the old library where the fire station is now. I mean, I won't talk about the unreturned books. I shouldn't have appeared. But we spent a little bit of time writing this proclamation. Just wanted to read it. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a safe space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities, and libraries serve as vibrant community hubs and third spaces, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. Libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of backgrounds, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities to support career growth and economic success. And libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And libraries protect the rights, the right to read, think, and explore standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression, and dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. Libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to the Library. So myself and here as a council, we're proclaiming April 6th through the 12th of 2025 Library Week. So thank you so much, Kathleen, and all of your staff. Thank you.
Why don't you guys get in the middle? We'll stand around. This Saturday, no, the 12th of April is our local author showcase. We have, I believe it's 29 local authors from Ventura County and Oxnard that's going to be present with their, with their, their books and a lot of different crafts and tables. So definitely come out and check us out. This is at the main library, April 12th, and it's from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
This is the presentation of a proclamation designating the month of April 2025 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity here in the city of Oxnard. And for that, I'd like to call up Gabriel Islas, Elisa Torres, Caesar Aldanya, Luis Campa, Juana Martinez, and Julia Estrada from the city of Oxnard.
All right, and everybody gets one, but I'm going to borrow Gabriel's for just a second here. All right, so we have a proclamation for April 2025 for Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. Whereas April is Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, a statewide celebration first established by the California Legislature in 2019. And whereas the city of Oxnard believes that arts, culture, and creativity are essential to a thriving community. And whereas arts inspire discovery, lifelong learning, and joy. And whereas culture creates connections, encourages understanding, and strengthens community. And whereas creativity sparks innovation, growth, and positive change. And whereas arts organizations that serve the city lead efforts to advance the arts through programs, partnerships, and the community building initiatives. And whereas this collective work at the local level and throughout the state encourages racial equity, uplifts our community, and changes our lives for the better. Now therefore, our mayor, Louis A. MacArthur, mayor of the city of Oxnard, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, and encourages everyone to join in the celebration. Congratulations to you all. And do we have a lead person who would like to say a few words to start with? Ms. Estrada.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of city council for taking on this effort and making this proclamation. On behalf of the city of Oxnard, the Culture Arts Division of the Culture and Community Services Department is proud to celebrate Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month through all of our programs. In the six years since its creation, the Culture Arts Division has successfully integrated arts into every facet of our department with the vision of art is for everyone. We reach over 7,700 youth through year-round educational art and movement programs. Fifty-two, testing, okay. 52,335 people through our drop-in recreational art programs, and 57,447 people through our special events that feature art components. This month, we'll also be celebrating World Art Day on April 15th, where you can visit all of our drop-off, drop-in sites for a special art project to be featured in our annual art gala that will be held on April 24th at the Oxnard Pal Gym. For information on where you can find all those World Art Day programs, visit our social media using the handle @OxnardRec, and you can see the whole schedule. Also here in chambers, you can see art throughout the year from the city of Oxnard programs. Yesterday was Caesar Chavez Day, and we are honoring him through the two canvas paintings hanging here in council chambers completed by one of our senior services and arts academy instructors, Vivian Sandoval. The canvases celebrate the work of Caesar Chavez and will proudly be displayed in council chambers for the entire month. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council members, for recognizing Arts and Culture and Creativity Month.
Absolutely. Carolyn, anybody want to say?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Marina Mullen, the executive director of the Oxnard Performing Arts Center. Thank you for inviting us to be a part of the celebration today. More than anything, we just wanted to switch the light back on to our local artists, because they are the ones doing the work, beautifying our community, beautifying our community, educating our youth, and just overall making this a beautiful and vibrant place that we call home. So I just, I'm going to let you say a few words. Is that okay? Okay. Thao.
So, yeah, you can hear me. Okay. So my name's Thao. I'm on the board for the OPAC, and I'm on the commissioner on the arts and cultural arts for the city of Oxnard. I just want to say and just express how important art is to me, and I just really believe in art being a way to, for all of us to just, you know, express ourselves, express ideas, and just connect community, right? And I love the work that you all have been doing. I love that we're celebrating this month, and I'll hand over the mic now to the next person. So thank you.
My name is Gabriel Isles. It's very nice to meet, meet all of you. Just wanted to say that I am a landscape painter and the curator of creativity at the Santa Paula Art Museum and a teaching artist. And I have taught youth classes at Oxnard Performing Arts Center in both painting and drawing, and I believe that our education provides structure for creativity, expression, and identity. Art has the power to make a statement, highlight beauty, and process trauma. As a young artist growing up in Oxnard, the teachers and artists who fostered my growth helped me find my own voice, and I only hope that I can help our youth in their own journey. Thank you.
Wow, okay, Gabriel. Thank you. That's, I don't have anything amazing to follow up with that, because like, how do you, how do you top that? But that's the great thing about this community is that we get to meet people like Gabriel, like Luis, and Thao, and Lisa, who's not here, but she is in my mind. I'd like to thank OPAC for giving me multiple opportunities to teach the youth in the community by even creating on the land, leading it, and hiring a bunch of local talent to really highlight them. Just, this art community is amazing, and it, I'm so upset that it took me so long to figure that out, and now I get to flourish in it and hopefully highlight a bunch of local artists as well. Muchas gracias a mis padres por dándome la oportunidad. Vienen de Michoacán copandaro y pues me dieron la oportunidad para ayudar mi comunidad y pues aquí está tu hija.
Hello, my name is Luis Fernando Campa. I graduated last summer in a bachelor's in studio arts. I'm currently teaching an after-school program in Santa Paula Elementary School at the basics of media arts or digital art, and especially in the age of AI, where so many people feel like art is this mystical talent. I can assure you that an eight-year-old is very capable of making art. They rather use their imagination. They, I learn from them almost every single day, and it's just kind of fascinating seeing how my generation views art versus how their generation views art. And it's very hopeful seeing them get so focused on the art they make. And I also, what, sorry, I'm like overwhelmed. Also what Jenny said, this is a very amazing community, and I also realized that a little too late as well. So thank you for this opportunity.
My name is Caesar Aldana. I'm a printmaker and also an art teacher at Blackstock Junior High. I'm honored to be here with the other artists here, and thank you, council, and thank you, OPAC, for recognizing us. I, you know, I agree with a lot of what these artists say, and my thing is to go to school and teach art to kids, it's almost like a dream come true. So everything, I agree with everything they said, and I push that to all my students and to my daughter back there, who's also an inspiring artist herself. Well, thank you again.
One thing, I almost forgot, but I did also want to take a quick second and recognize David Josotomi from the county of Ventura Arts and Culture. He has been awesome and super supportive of arts in Oxnard as well.
Thank you, everybody. We're just a big arts community, so I'm really grateful that all of you are here and contributing to what makes the fabric of our community, which is the arts. So thank you so much for all you do individually. Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn, for the OPAC. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. We have, uh, one more proclamation, and this is for the designated the month of April, uh, 2025 as the Fair Housing Month in the City of Oxnard. And for that, uh, Rebecca Elliott. Thank you, Ms. Elliott, President of Ventura County Board of Realtors.
Hi there. Gabriela. Hello. Julio, good to see you, my friend. There's three.
All right. So I was tasked with reading the proclamation. So proclamation for Fair Housing Month, April 2025. Whereas April 10th, 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without discrimination and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors and the Real Estate Fraud Advisory Team is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every one of their rights to fair housing. And whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all Realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. Now therefore, the Mayor Louis MacArthur, so I'm Gabriela Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of Oxnard, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Oxnard, and asks that all residents in our community to join in reaffirming our obligation and commitment to fair housing opportunities and civil rights for all. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Oxnard to be affixed this first day of April 2025. So, on behalf of our mayor and the city, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Rebecca Elliott, President, uh, 2025 President of the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. We have over 2,000 members in our association. April marks the 57th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, as you said, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and Fair Housing Month across the country. As Realtors in Ventura County, we are committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our communities, and to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help ensure every one of their rights to fair housing. To that end, while the process of finding and buying a home has certainly changed over the last several decades, and generally for the better, more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. We appreciate a proclamation from this council recognizing April as the National Fair Housing Month, and we hope people join us in the year-long commemoration of the Fair Housing Act in Oxnard and across Ventura County. We urge all citizens who wholeheartedly recognize this by celebration, celebrating it throughout the year. And I wanted to let you know, our public statement is we're having a fair housing event on April 23rd in Santa Paula at the Ag Museum from 11:30 to 3:30, and you can visit our website at vcrealtors.com for further information. And we thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
I didn't introduce Julio Gomez, a board member, I'm so sorry, but he surprised us and showed up tonight, so Julio works really hard.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Elliott.
Fellow Mayor and fellow council members, I would like to thank very much all of the people that are recipients and the actions the city takes to recommend, because any type of discrimination or fraud or abuse of the ability to be in a home correctly under the laws is significant in this community. And, um, I've pledged in the past that I will go after anybody that is taking advantage of that. I still, that's my word. The second, I would like to, and it would be totally wrong for me not to say anything on this matter. The arts in the community is a tremendous thing, but several weeks ago, we had a meeting here where there was a issue about the performing arts. And there was not enough credit given to our Parks and Recreation Department in the City of Oxnard. It became a mob scene, and a tremendous amount of accolades were given that were undeserved, that this Parks and Recreation Commission had not done what was appropriate. They told the truth, they did not lie, and I'm very proud of those individuals that work in our City of Oxnard, Parks and Rec. I was embarrassed with some of the statements that were made against them. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Pearl. If there are no, no other comments, we'll go to the next, um, item on the agenda, and that's, uh, Item F for public comments for items not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? Are these the speaker cards for this item? Okay. We'll start with Reverend Roger Labonte, followed by Ms. Pat Brown. Is a reverend here? Oh, yes. Thank you, Reverend.
Before I begin, I'd like to let you know that I do have Parkinson's disease, and so if I'm not legible, you don't understand, please raise your hand, I appreciate that, I'll just repeat myself. Allow me to introduce myself, my name is Reverend Roger Labonte, a Roman Catholic priest. Five years ago, I was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease, at which time I decided to retire and be inactive, as I need to focus on my recovery, exercising on a daily basis. Upon retiring, I decided to move back to where I was first assigned after ordination, Oxnard, a beautiful, quiet, peaceful community. And so it was, I relocated from my parish on Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, to an assisted-living community on Gonzalez Road. Lived I realized at the time that I was moving from an area where the nighttime air was often filled with police sirens and choppers, to a neighborhood where we are often awakened at times at night and early morning with cars souped up with altered mufflers. They speed down what I call Gonzalez Speedway, from Outlet Drive to Rice Road. The noise seems to be getting louder and louder. One night, the noise was so extreme that it woke me up, and then proceeding to intensify, I thought sure the car was about to crash through my window. As a result, I felt a lot of bed hitting my face against the nightstand, bleeding on the floor. I thought to myself, this is getting out of hand. I called the police department several times, and they would inform me that the officer assigned to the area will be informed, and there's nothing more that they can do. I have a suggestion that, I know there's not too much you can do, but I know you can't put in speed bumps, 'cause you have fire trucks and rescue squads going down that street. I know, they come to our place, too. But there's gotta be something we can do to make the community back to the peaceful community that I remember when I was first ordained. So, I came up with the idea that, just as it's a mandate to have our cars smog inspected, what about mandating that altered mufflers be inspected and not be installed on cars? I understand it's not just Gonzalez Road, it's a problem that's growing throughout Oxnard and Kimball community. I live in Oxnard, I'm concerned about Oxnard. I'm just curious as to what does an officer do if a car, a car passes by making an extreme noise? Do they address it at the time? Do they do anything? So, I'd just like to ask the committee to maybe put this on an agenda sometime?
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you so much for coming in here and making those comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pat Brown?
I have a solution for him. Stay, because I have a solution for your problem. Right in the middle of Oxnard. I have to, I have to use a hearing device because of all the, the, uh, noise and whatnot when I go to the airport, uh, three days a week. I'm a volunteer at the Aviation Museum, and those old airplanes make a lot of racket. They vibrate, too. Um, so, so that's what's happened, so. Anyway, the reason that I'm here is up here speaking tonight is because we have a very serious problem here in Oxnard that apparently nobody is really very aware of. It's all the homeless people who gather in what they think are hidden places, in alleyways, that, and I got one, got him right here in, uh, in downtown Oxnard, in an alley. And, um, what the problem is, is not necessarily them just being there, is it's a, it's a two-lane road, alley, and they take up half of it. So you got a car coming from both directions, and you have to move them around and, and whatnot in order to get around this. And the worst part about it is, is that they leave all kinds of trash, paper, mostly paper, just sprinkled about for the wind to carry off somewhere, I guess, and they have big piles of it. And, uh, I don't know about you guys, but for me, I'm gonna have to get trash containers or trash bags to put out in order for them to have someplace to put their trash, because it's just about to drive us nuts. And they'll stay for a few days, and then they'll leave, and a lot of times they'll come back again. And, and this goes from the alleyway that's east of Oxnard Boulevard, from Driffl Boulevard at the south, all the way up to, uh, Sixth Street, uh, no, Seventh Street, um, and where the gas station is. And they're bothered, they bother the gas station as well, but I haven't spoken to them about it, but I've driven in and through the alleyway there at the Boys and Girls Club, uh, the alleyway that goes down, and that's where it is. It's from there down to Driffl, two blocks long, from eighth, uh, from Ninth through Seventh, technically, on the east side of Oxnard Boulevard. And it is a real, real hassle. We have all these, this open space from the old thru, dry, uh, the old, uh, car lots, used car lots, just sitting there with the dumpster, but will they draw?
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Walk over to the dumpster and throw the stuff in? No.
Thank you, Pat.
Dumpster sits right out in the middle, they don't wanna
Pat, thank you.
Cause any trouble.
We're, we're out of time.
So they leave the, leave it all through the alleyways. We need to have something done. You need to have somebody drive through there every day.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Every day, somebody has to drive through there and check it out, and then pick up all this stuff. Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, I, I know with your hearing impairment, but, but thank you so much for your comments. We'll move on to Teresa Clemmons, followed by, by Mr. Greg Runyon.
Oh, this is another one, this is the one I'm, cut. Okay, so if I can do anything to help, that will be fine. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, thank you, I, I understand with her hearing impairment. Thank, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Teresa?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, uh, today, um, I'd like to talk about the youth and families in Oxnard, and people have brought to my attention this week, um, as I have been walking through the neighborhoods of Blackstock, and, uh, they have discussed, um, and given their, um, recommendations. Can't hear me? Okay. Anyway, um, there was a mother who discussed about, uh, sports programs and how they are needed, uh, especially at the junior high level, and how they should be supported, she wanted extra support. They, um, in going to, uh, on trips, she mentioned Dodger Stadium and that they needed a lot of money, apparently, I don't know the details on that, and that, um, anyway, we should look into more sports programs for our youth. And also, um, I did recognize that, um, both Gabby and Michaela had open sessions for, uh, more people to be heard, and I applaud that, thank you. And I noticed that the Youth Academy was online already on the first, I don't know if you had anything to do with that, but, but thank you for that. And, uh, people were excited to already see about the egg hunt in our community coming up this weekend and other programs, so more programs for the seniors and adults and, and children in general, and at the parks, uh, that's what they would want, so that's what I wanted to express, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons, thank you so much. Mr. Greg Runyon, and Abel Magany, you'll follow, Mr. Runyon.
Counsel, Mayor Counsel, and everyone. At the sake of making fun of myself, um, I was speaking with someone the other day, and we were at Juvenile Hall doing a, uh, we go and we speak to all the, the residents of Juvenile Hall, if that's what you wanna call them, once a month, and, um, one of the people there, he said, you know, he sees me on YouTube a lot, speaking, he said, "You're a celebrity." And it made me laugh because I started thinking, well, there's a lot of people who watch who probably are afraid to say something for a lot of reasons. One of the big one is, we live in a society right now that, you know, if someone disagrees with you, they really start trying to attack you, and they really start trying to tear you down. And, and in a time where as a community, we should try to build one another up, we always seem to find ways to tear each other down. It, it just is what it is, and it breaks my heart when we find all the reasons to disagree with people. We find political reasons, we find identity reasons. And, you know, we were talking about fair housing. I'm old enough to remember Willie Mays. I don't know, some of you are probably, uh, who's that? But, um, Willie Mays, probably the greatest baseball player of all time, um, you can debate that, I know some of you think it's Otani, but still Willie Mays was, he was the bomb. He moved from New York when the Giants went to Frisco, and he went, and they celebrated him, man, he was the MVP, he was awesome. And he went to move into a neighborhood. into a neighborhood. And they said, "No." His neighbors said, "No. We don't want people like you." It was about the color of his skin, not his heart. It wasn't about what he could give that community. They worried about things like property values and things like that. And instead of realizing what makes us good people is our ability to get along, we seem to think what makes us good people is our ability to stand out and be identified. I don't wanna be a celebrity because I say something that 50% or 60% of people agree with. I'd rather be a celebrity quote because I say something that's right. So, I, I really wanna encourage y'all to, to try as hard as you can not to be partisan. Don't, don't deal with identity, deal with people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Abel Magania?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council and staff. My name is Abel Magania. I am the executive director for the Downtown Oxford Improvement Association. So, we're your partner here in the city here, trying to revitalize our downtown, bring it back to life. And happy to report that things are happening and there's like a lot of good momentum going with the new development. But also, the, the heart of the city's always been about the culture. And riffing off of this whole thing, today, I was happy to see, you know, there's recognition for Arts and Culture Month. And wanted to mention a few of the little things that we're doing, our own contributions to the art, culture scene here in downtown. One, I don't know if anyone's aware, but we have a utility box art program that we started probably 10 years ago now. And, yeah, you know, it's not unusual. Other cities have done these things. It's an easy way to get out there and brighten up the, the streetscape. We have 13 utility boxes that were done. And they, we, we themed it as Community Connections in a way to really give a broad artistic license to the artists, let them interpret the things they, but also, there's a big placemaking component to, component to it too. So, it connects people to the places where these art utility boxes are. So, like Fourth and C Street, it's right next to the location where there was a former USO building. And it's military themed. It's an homage to all our people and the service people that make this community, so much part of this community. Seventh and Oxnard Boulevard, there's one that pays homage to China Alley, that was there many years ago also too. So, history, also connecting people to the history. So, that's out there on the streets. You can go enjoy those. There's 13 utility boxes. Visit Oxnard, they've done a great job in promoting that too. And it's on our website, the listing of all, where those paid boxes are. I wanted to also mention our office. We're doing our little part to activate and create a studio gallery setting, place where artists can show. We have a show coming up this Saturday. I would like to invite everybody to that. It's at 6:30 PM. 15 artists that are represented there that had a little pop-up installation out in the grounds of the Carnegie, actually, kind of a little subversive type of fun thing that they did there. But they'll be showing there, the artists will be there to meet and greet. And then, you know, just again, a demonstration about how artists can, you know, turn something that's seemingly like, you know, a blight and turn it around into a positive. So, we have a fun art project too, that we're just putting out the call to artists. And I don't share this, but it's, we're taking some of those abandoned payphones that are out there that are blinding, and they're gonna become interactive art pieces. And we have some, already a great, tremendous response from some of the artists of real renown, I think too. And we're looking forward to some, some real creative executions on that one. So, thank you so much for all the support that you give to the arts.
Thank you, Abel. Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is this thing at the Carnegie Mayor gonna be on city property? And if it is, is there insurance?
Is there, what Mr. Magania just, just said?
Mr. Magania?
Councilman Perillo just asked a question whether this art, this invitation you made for this Saturday, 6:30 PM, if it's gonna be at the Carnegie? Or where, where are you gonna host this?
Oh, I'm sorry, that, our office, I just assumed everybody like would know our office. 519th South C Street, it's right next to Taco Sal Diablo, and it's overlooking Plaza Park at Fifth and C Street.
So, it's not at the Carnegie?
It's not at the Carnegie.
And the reason I asked is, would there be insurance?
No, I'm sorry, confused.
Okay, thank you.
The, the original placement was, some of the showings was there. But no, this is in our office. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Abel, once again. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Mayor, we have two virtual speakers. We'll start with the first one ending in 6377. Please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes, starting now.
Hello. Mayor McArthur, Mayor Protem Turan, members of the city council. My name is Manuel Herrera, Citizens for Better Oxnard. I'm just basically calling in to acknowledge and thank the city council for, for highlighting our local youth, to allow them to start the city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, then followed by a brief description of their student accomplishments. In this case, Mr. Jonathan Hernandez. I think that's a great idea. You know, it's always great to highlight our youth. And then, as Mr. Hernandez proved, it's never too late, never too late to change your life around and to become a, a local role model. So, so I give a lot of props to, to Jonathan for, for being that role model. Now, I don't know whose idea this was to implement this, but I think it's a great idea. And so, kudos to whoever thought of this. Please continue to do that. And I, I just wanted to call in and thank you guys for doing that. Please continue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Herrera, for calling in. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we're gonna move on to caller ending in 4018. Please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes, starting now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Partello. I am a 38-year resident of Oxnard. About three weeks ago, a couple of my neighbors approached me when I was working in the front yard with a letter in their hand. So, apparently, this letter was sent out anonymously by mail to all of the residents on my street. And they had a long laundry list of some issues and concerns that they had. And, you know, like people not cutting their grass, vehicles and boats in their front yard, dogs letting loose and pooping on people's yards, cars and trucks abandoned. So, a whole laundry list. So, I shared this with the city council. I sent it to them. And I asked some questions because I didn't have all the answers. And I wanted to help these neighbors. They came to me for help. And I also sent it to my neighborhood council, Cabril. Maybe they wanted to put that on a future agenda, some of the concerns. So, I got responses of the seven council members from three. Aaron Starr actually called me, Councilman Starr, and he didn't have any answers for these things himself. And then Bert Perillo had emailed me, just a, you know, acknowledgement that I had sent that email, and he acknowledged receiving it. And then Gabe Turan responded. And I really appreciate Councilman Turan took the time to attempt to answer the eight questions that I had. So, thank you very much, Councilman Turan. So, I went further, and I put together a Word document because I needed some answers myself. And people always come to me. I used to be the chair of my neighborhood council, so they often do, even though I'm no longer the chair. So, I put together some information. And one of them was for code compliance. So, if you have a complaint for code compliance, you can actually email codecompliance@oxnard.org, or you can call 805-385-7940, extension nine. Or you can actually go on the city website. And you go to their home, you can go to community development, code compliance, and code compliance complaint. And you can actually write a complaint from their website. The other issue was abandoned vehicles. There is a number, 805-982-7001. The other was animal safety, for dogs and cats that run loose, 805-385-7786. The graffiti hotline is 805-385-8010. Oxnard Police Department, non-emergency, you dial 805-385-7600, dispatch for parking issues on the street. So, I found out that inoperative vehicles, they must be stored behind a six-foot fence or within a garage. Parked vehicles, like in a driveway, must be on an approved driveway. Can't park them in your front yard, you can't park them on your side yard. Now, commercial vehicles, there are lots of complaints.
Thanks, Mr. Perillo.
Because we have a lot of...
Thanks, Doug. I apologize. We're, we're out of time, but thank you for calling in.
If anybody wants this, you can email at communityrenewalliance@gmail.com, and I'd be happy to send you a copy of this information. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Perillo. Man, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was calling you.
Partello, I'm sorry. Looking at Mr. Councilman Perillo. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Absolutely. Madam Clerk, any other callers?
Mayor, that concludes our speakers virtually and in person. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone who made the comments for calling in. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. This is item H. Actually, I apologize. This is item G. This is a report from our city manager, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you. So, we have a couple of quick updates this week. But I wanna just share that for many years, I've been wearing a toupee, and I've realized it's just not worth it. So, I'm gonna follow Chief Sonstegard. Hair is just really overrated. So, we have a town hall meeting coming up for District One. This is related to the state's new updated fire hazard severity zone maps. It's a little bit confusing what the state is doing here. So, we're gonna hold a total of three of these meetings covering the geography where the state's fire hazard severity zone maps have changed and are now including within the jurisdiction of the city of Oxnard. So, the first one is this Thursday, April the 3rd, at 6:00 PM. It's going to be at Hollywood Beach Elementary School. The address is 4,000 Sunset Lane, here in Oxnard. So, this is, while this is something the state is doing, we obviously wanna help people to try to understand what it means and, more importantly, what it does not mean. So, again, this is the first of three meetings, and the next two are coming after the next council meetings. So, we'll announce those at the next council meeting. All right. April 5th, which is this Saturday, is the next Free Del Norte drop-off days. Well, it's this day. So, April 5th, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This is open to all residents to dispose of your bulky items, trash, and unwanted items for free. Okay. Now, there are some rules and restrictions. That's all available on the city's website, and they'll tell you that day as well, if, if you don't have a chance to read it. But it is, again, Saturday, April 5th, begins at 8:00 AM and ends at 2:00 PM. I've participated in this before, so expect a, a brief wait. Not very long, but there's, there could be a wait. Okay. Here we go. This is, oh, it's only the second annual, the Oxnard Accessible Extravaganza Egg Hunt. So, free to our community. There will be arts and crafts, prizes, photo opportunities, and games. Also, this Saturday, April 5th, 10:00 AM to noon at College Park, which is 3250 South Rose Avenue. So, I'm assuming this is for kids. So, families with kids, come enjoy. Yeah, this is for kids. And I, this is, I can never say no. So, we have a visitor here. The last time we had a visitor, it was from the North Pole. Tonight's visitor, I'm not sure where the visitor comes, comes from. But I will announce that we have the Spring Float Tour, which will be occurring starting this Saturday through April 18th. And we have a float that will drive around the city to various neighborhoods. Or, is the translator for the visitor going to go over the dates?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
More than happy to.
So, here is, please welcome our visitor from, not the North Pole. I don't know where you're from. You can tell us yourself. Thank you.
Well, good evening, folks. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I am so unbelievably happy to be speaking to you this evening regarding our two exciting spring events being brought to you by our Cultural and Community Services Department. So, as the city manager mentioned, April 5th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, we'll be hosting the Second Annual Accessible Extravaganza, which is over at College Park. This is an adaptive egg hunt that was specifically designed to provide an egg hunt opportunity that is accessible and memorable for people of all, of all abilities. So, please come check out the egg hunt, the craft area, the yard games, and of course, the City Core Train that will also be there. You do have to pre-register. So, pre-registration is required. So, if you'd like to check it out, go to oxnardrec.org. And then, immediately following the extravaganza at 3:00 PM on April 5th, we'll be launching our first-ever Spring Float Tour. So, just like our Halloween and holiday floats, the Spring Float will be coming to a neighborhood near you. And will feature festive decor with stops for potential photo opportunities, excuse me, with the spring bunny, and lots of laughs and smiles. So, be sure to check out @oxnard, I'm sorry, @oxnardrec on Facebook and Instagram for float updates. And on float nights, follow along on the Glimpse app to track where the bunny goes. And we are absolutely jumping with excitement to see you all there. So, we do have neighborhood dates. We'll be hitting the southwest community on April 5th after the extravaganza. And then, we essentially have dates every Saturday, Sunday, and Friday, leading up to our, our Easter holiday. So, very excited to bring this new float, float tour to Oxnard. I got flyers, if anyone needs it.
Oh, yeah.
Got candy eggs for, for all of our fine folks.
Yeah.
Feel free to grab an egg. Our, our bunny is a bit sight impaired, so don't wanna make her navigate the, the back there. So, but we appreciate the time. Thank you, folks.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Bunny. Thank you. Mr. Nguyen, was that, was that it for your report? Okay, wonderful. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. That's item H, City Council Reports. We'll start with Councilman Perez.
Thank you, Mayor, for the recognition. I first wanted to start my report by offering the public some clarity. I know that the weekly packets have gone out regarding upcoming neighborhood council meetings. And I just wanted to clarify, the Blackstock North and Blackstock South Neighborhood Council Meeting is not on Wednesday. It's actually Thursday, April 3rd, at 6:00 PM, located at the South Oxnard Center, 200 East Bard Street. Simultaneously, there will be a, another Neighborhood Council Meeting that same night. The South Winds Neighborhood Council Meeting will be Thursday, April 3rd, as well, at 6:00 PM, Hay Cox School Cafeteria, located at 5400 Perkins Road. So, I'll definitely be at one of the Neighborhood Council Meetings that night, considering they're both happening at the same time. As our city manager shared, I wanted to kinda give a sneak peek. That District Five and District Six will also be holding a town hall to discuss the state's fire hazard severity zone maps. And that will take place on, I believe, April 30th at 6:30 PM. So, more to come. But that will be located at Hay Cox Elementary School as well. And this will just be an opportunity for staff from the Fire Department, Community Development, and the city manager's office to discuss the updated maps and explain the terms used by the state in this process. I also, as I was driving through the community within the last week, I just wanted to thank our staff as well, because I've seen that the streets have been painted off of Savior's Road on my way to work. I, I seen all of the, just improvements happening there and really wanted to just give credit for the work that they're doing. I also had the opportunity to meet with the Mini Nature Reserve to discuss how we could work together to offer more green spaces, specifically in South Oxnard. One recommendation that I'd like to add for a future agenda item, I'd like to request a presentation on the 2025 point in time count by the county's continuum of... a presentation on the 2025 Point in Time Count by the county's Continuum of Care, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perez. Councilmember Perlo?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the people that came to public comment and those that called in. It's been brought to my attention that some people already are experiencing some fireworks, and there have been some pretty egregious complaints, in my opinion, against the police department that we're not doing enough. I would recommend that anyone that's got a concern about fireworks, get ahold of the police department, and if they're interested, and they get a ride-along, it's free. You can get a ride-along, and you can see what's going on. And there's also 311, and there's also the direct line to the police department if they want to take advantage of it. On the graffiti, I want to thank the City of Oxnard's graffiti, because there are some people that are continually taking, hitting various neighborhoods really hard, and we're doing the best that we can to clean it up. It's never perfect, but perfection is impossible to perceive, to find. You can work at it, and I believe our city's doing a great job. Just as a side note, as Councilmember Perez has asked for something on the agenda, this has been an ongoing issue, the sidewalk food vendors. I've gotten compliments in areas that I do not represent for the food vendors that have been removed from the area by the Smart and Final Shopping Center by Citrus Grove Lane and Oxnard Boulevard. Tremendous. But in another area I do not represent, I continually get requests, why is not the food vendor, a big-time food vendor, on Gonzalez and Rose Road not removed from the public sidewalk? They're blocking the public sidewalk for anyone that would be in a handicapped, accessible, basically wheelchair, from getting by. And it is not a small operation. Multiple tents, multiple stoves, multiple propane, and it is so well organized, they even have their lights. They give a bit of an extra incentive if you happen to be looking for a gas station, they help light up the Shell gas station. This has got to change, in my opinion. The last is, there should be, coming shortly, some sort of presentation under the city manager's report with respect to the levy work that is being done on Ventura Road for SCR 3. Hopefully, a drone flyover or something of that nature. And last, on a personal, self-serving note, I get a copy of a letter from Food Share, and I do listen to the news and read a paper about Food Share losing their funding for tremendous amount of food. I'm not telling anybody what to do, but if there is a thought of doing something, this organization could use some help.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perlo. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't plan to say anything about Food Share, because I appreciate Councilmember Perlo bringing it up, but I'll just say very quickly, I did see statements online that, well, why should the government be subsidizing these larger-scale food service operations or food pantry operations when churches and small community-based organizations are able to handle that for communities? And that tells me, folks may not be aware of where those smaller entities get their actual food for donation to families and community members who need it from, and Food Share and entities like it are where, that's the hub for that. So as Councilmember Perlo said, I just hope folks will also consider, if you'd like to take action, writing to your, our federal legislators, your thoughts on that, and how this truly affects those in need in every community across this nation, so specifically here in Ventura County as well. For my actual notes that I have here, we have the Carriage Square coming up on April 24th in District 2. They'll meet at 7:00 p.m. at Curran School. And the Teal Club Town Hall that took place last Thursday, I appreciate our planning staff, as well as the developer for the Teal Club project, taking time to give one more opportunity to the community to learn about it and ask questions. There are a couple dozen folks in attendance, and the questions, as I understand it, will be attached, as well as a number of responses, to the agenda for that meeting, which I believe we'll be publishing later this week. So thank you again to all those who attended and those who helped put that together, and thank you, Councilwoman Perlo, for your thoughts and support in putting that forward for the public. Just a quick thing also, Reverend Labonte, who spoke earlier, there may or may not be updates on state legislation. Perhaps our Oxnard PD staff might reach out to him if he left his contact information with the clerk, just to hear some of his feedback around mufflers. I did want to point out that in March of 2021, things may have changed since then. I'm not clear on the vehicle code, but we did hold a town hall meeting virtually, because it was still during COVID, on a number of community-sourced topics, one of which was vehicles in Oxnard, specifically speeding and loud mufflers. And our Assistant Police Chief gave a pretty good presentation about what the vehicle code states and what some of the options are, but also some of the limitations that exist with that. I was able to attend last week, last Thursday, the Officer, Dispatcher, Supervisor, and Professional Staff Member of the Year Award Ceremony with Oxnard PD, and thank you for putting that together and for recognizing our staff, who go above and beyond what is called of them. I know all of our staff do everything they can to serve the community, and even then, there's still some who go beyond that. So thank you for the invite to that. And last couple items here, I do want to thank our neighboring city councilwoman, Dr. Martinez Bravo. For those who aren't unaware or did not see, there was a hate-based incident that occurred in the City of Camarillo, and she spoke on it very directly, and I agree with her that hate has no place in any place, nor does injustice, and I appreciate her speaking out on that, especially in this case where it was targeting field workers. So thank you to Councilwoman Dr. Martinez Bravo for that. And lastly, ABC 7 publishes a story about this, but Oxnard High School was visited by the Shamrock Club, which is a group of local small businesses, who donated to the Yellow Jackets Unified Sports, the seniors, who are special-need students, donated an all-expenses-paid trip to them, including souvenirs and transportation and meals, to Disneyland. And so I was very honored to get the invite to be there to attend, and the, one of the board trustees, trustee Torres Baker was there as well, and it was just great to see it, and there were a number of them who'd never been to Disneyland, so this will be their first time attending it. And I appreciate the business owners who came together when that call to action was made by their coach, of all people, saying, how can we get these kids to Disneyland? And so it was great to see that. You can see that on Oxnard Union's Instagram. I believe they posted the news story about it. So thank you. Those are my comments, Mayor. Much appreciated.
Thank you for sharing that. We'll jump over to Councilwoman Basua. And walk our way back this way. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Got me Pfizer Prize there.
I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. I, over the past two weeks, I participated at Oceanview School District in Career Day. I presented to a classroom of sixth graders and eighth graders. Thank you to the staff at Oceanview School District. They were very, very kind, and I enjoyed talking to the young kids. Not, well, they're not young. They're, what, 12? You know, so they're, but actually, it was very interesting, because they were very engaging, and they actually knew a lot about the community they lived in. So that was extremely rewarding for me to do. One of the things that I took away from that was, they asked me a question, and they asked me what I thought success was in the city council. You know, what makes you a successful leader? And I had to think about that for a bit, and what I came up with is, I really believe that being a successful leader is leaving an organization better than what you founded. And when I look at that, I kind of had to go back to when I first was elected, and I came into an organization that was broken, unfortunately. And when I mean broken, I mean broke. You know, we had no money, and I can really, really say that the administration and everybody that has grown with me is, they've been very successful, because Oxnard is not what it was when I first started. So I took a valuable lesson with me that day, and it happened to be an eighth grader that asked. So it kind of made me reflect on what the last six years, almost seven years, have been like, and I'm really proud to be part of this organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Basua. Councilmember Starr?
Thank you. I guess the first I'd like to discuss is Pastor, I'm sorry, Reverend Labonte. He's in an assisted living facility. It's over on Gonzalez. It's near, just past Williams. And I did have an opportunity to meet with him at the facility there, and I actually observed and heard some of the really noisy environment that they have to put up with. So I'm really hoping that there's something that can be done. I've realized a lot of this is preempted by state law, you know, with the vehicle code. If staff wants to reach out to him, I do happen to have his phone number. He also left me, he just left me a message, actually. With him was Elvira Crutcher, a really sweet 95-year-old woman who's also in the same facility. She was there for moral support, and he tells me that they just left. Apparently, she left her purse in the third row, so I'd be happy to bring that back to her after the meeting, if somebody would give that to me. Regarding Doug, thank you.
Here it is.
All right. I'm going to be carrying a purse around. That's going to be interesting.
Actually matches.
It matches. I think this goes well. What do you think?
I like it.
I'll make sure I'll get that to her. So I think Doug Portella brought up some questions that I wasn't able to answer, and I don't think I'm the only person that wants to know the answers to those questions. And I'd like to, I guess I wonder, is this the sort of information that we might be able to add to the 311 app? It'd be interesting if somebody could make a call, reach out to Code Compliance through that, rather than having to navigate our website and try and find that. So it just seems like, you know, helpful phone numbers to call and that sort of thing might be something worth adding, if it's a simple thing to do, and I don't know how much work it takes to change the 311 app. I went to the neighborhood council meeting in Rio Linto on March 20th. Big issue of discussion there? Fireworks. It's not just, it's not just one person who's complaining about this. I made lots and lots of complaints about fireworks. I'm sure you all have as well. I am perplexed on what we can do about it. I realize that some of these fireworks are coming from out of state, especially the big ones, so much the safe and sane ones are kind of, you know, minimal, but the big ones coming from out of state are a real problem. I don't know what we can do about that, but I guess one thing that I would like staff to consider is, let's at the very least put out some sort of mailer. We occasionally put out mailers citywide, just reminding people of what the penalties are for the fireworks and that we do prosecute them, and we've successfully, you know, fined people in the past, and they're subject to a fine if we, if they do that. Maybe that will minimize it a little bit. But I know it's a vexing issue for all of us. It's really harmful to small, you know, to animals and people suffering from post-traumatic stress. So I'm just hopeful that there's something we can do about this. And I think that's basically it. One thing I, and I want to apologize to the city manager, I did not follow up with you on the issue of the tour of the AWPF and having a member of the public with me. So that's my fault for not following up with you, but I would definitely like to have, like to have some members of the public be able to attend these sorts of things, because I think we have, candidly, we have a lot of good things to show. I mean, I think that there's a lot of potential with that facility, and I think that it'd be nice if people could see that. So that's it for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Starr. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share, at the last, last time we had a meeting, I was virtual, because, and somebody encouraged me to disclose why I wasn't here. I was in Washington, D.C., actually, advocating to not cut federal funding and federal grants. So as many of you know, my daytime job, I work at Oxnard College, so I was especially focused on advocating for the Department of Ed and the impact that that could have in our local community. So career education and the importance of it, and I know there's been a report here in Oxnard about the need for good-paying jobs and skilled workers, and folks pursuing higher education like me have transformed their quality of life. So I just wanted to share that, all systems go, so. I have office hours at the library this upcoming Saturday, so please come visit if you have the time from 11:00 to 1:00. And the conversations we've had have been very rich, not just with your councilwoman, but also with the community partners as a whole. So if you don't come and, you know, chat with me, then you can chat with each other and all the different community representatives. So thank you all for who have been there, and I encourage folks to join if you haven't. I've been participating in Read for America, had the privilege of reading to Williams Schools and McKenna School, so that's been a treat. The mayor and I also had a tour of Little Italy in San Diego, so I want to thank our city manager for encouraging us and having us go and check out their downtown and just reimagine and envision. I know there's been several efforts and there's been assessments, so we'll see how we can work with the different community partners on the ground. Something that I don't think I shared last time that we had a meeting is, I'm on the Gold Coast Transit Center as part of my responsibilities representing Oxnard, and something that I was really excited about is our bus lines, and we're going to be seeing marquees with estimated times for the different lines. So that is a project that should be rolling out within the next year, so 2025, or so they tell me. So I'll keep you all posted on that, but keep your eyes out. I have seen some, like, lampposts or, you know, better lighting in the bus stops to make sure that folks, that the bus drivers don't miss pedestrians who are waiting for a ride. You know, usually when it's darker, some folks may miss a ride because, you know, human error. So better lighting, safety concerns, and for, to address safety concerns, and also we'll have those marquees. I also want to share my appreciation for the 311 app. It's been a love-hate relationship with me personally, because I'm having tech support issues, but we'll work that out. But I do know that representatives from the In La Quech Cultural Center, they have a youth center right there on the corner of the railroad and Fifth Street, and they reported a homeless encampment and a lot of trash, some trash on one side of the fence and then others on the actual railroad. So 311 was out there within days of reporting it on a Friday. By Tuesday, Wednesday, I got a report that it had been, some of it had been taken care of, but the trash or the debris on the railroad, they actually had to work with our railroad system to schedule that. So that's scheduled for April 3rd this week, and I just want to thank folks for their response. And thank you all, city staff, for supporting this councilwoman, because I know I've had a million questions, so I appreciate everybody's patience with me. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. I'll make my brief. In March, in celebration of Women's Month, I had the esteemed privilege of engaging in several events that highlighted the remarkable contributions of women within our community. On several of those events, I took my wife, and also I'm a father of two girls. One notable occasion was the recognition of 12 distinguished women leaders from Ventura County during the performance of Mariachi Gro at Pacifica High School, and I had the privilege of emceeing that event and gave a certificate to our very own Gabriela Rodriguez there, who was recognized among the 12 outstanding Ventura County women leaders. Additionally, I attended a noteworthy event organized by the Seroptimists International of Oxnard, where five exceptional young women, each navigating significant challenges, were awarded financial support and resources aimed at enhancing their educational pursuits, skills, and employment prospects. Seroptimists firmly advocates that education is a crucial pathway to economically empowering women and girls. In conjunction with this, five outstanding women were acknowledged for their unwavering commitment to volunteer efforts that assist other women and girls in our community in realizing their aspirations. And it was very nice to see our very own Assistant Police Chief Denise Morehouse, the president of the Seroptimists, leading that charge. Furthermore, I had the honor of participating in the Women's Leadership Forum hosted by the We Love You Foundation at the Huntington Library in San Marino. I was accompanied by a group of educators from Oxnard's Adult School, and we were privileged to hear a panel discussion featuring four esteemed women leaders representing a variety of fields. Also, I had the opportunity to attend, as Mayor Protem mentioned, several police functions, including the ceremony where officers that just graduated. including the ceremony where officers that just graduated the academy, that included 12, 11 recruits that successfully graduated the academy here at council chambers, and another lateral that came in from Reno, Nevada. So that's a wonderful event. Thanks, Police Chief Benitez, for putting that on. And then followed by a recognition and partnership with the foundation, the police foundation, and the OPOA who recognized civilian staff as well as the Officer of the Year, Dispatcher of the Year, and many others who were rightfully recognized for that. I also had the, the honor of attending, Mr. Doug Partello invited me to attend a Black Belt Ceremony where his own son was there. He's a student at UCLA and also a master Taekwondo. And I was able to participate and give recognition to those that were earning their black belts and including one of our own graduates from their, from this Taekwondo class, Julian, who is now a police officer with our agency. So he, among others, I can clearly see our future leaders here in our community. And seeing just the parental involvement in that program, it's, things don't happen by accident, so it's no surprise that these young people are just outstanding individuals here in our community that we have, including Mr. Partello's son, who, following that event, was quickly escorted out to go to Panama for a mission. And then also I had the opportunity, as Councilwoman Rodriguez mentioned, yesterday I went to Fred Williams, which was especially important for me because that's where I went to elementary school. So I was actually reading to the third grade class, the same class that I was in myself. So I showed them a photo because my mom has that third grade photograph of me on. So yeah, so I was able to show them like, look, I was right here on your stage some years ago. So that was a real treat for me to go back to that class. And then also I want to thank, I know Mr. Wolf is here, Michael, Department of Works Director. One of the things I'm very big on for our city is our aesthetics, our beautification. And his department has done a wonderful job in hearing my messaging. And if you can look up and down Rose Avenue as well as Rice and up and down Gonzalez, it looks like the city got a haircut. Beautiful canopies. It just presents well because I think if our city presents well, then that promotes homeownership, promotes investment in our city. So thank you, Mr. Wolf, for doing just that. And then lastly, I had the opportunity to go to the Samara Event where minority entrepreneurs were recognized at the gala at Zachary Dunes this past weekend. Byron put on a fantastic event there, recognizing the strong partnership that exists with a minority entrepreneur. Several were highlighted. So I had the honor to present several with certificates, including our very own Dr. Irene Pinkert, who received a lifetime achievement award by the organization. So I can see we're all very active promoting and being just great ambassadors for our city. So thank you all, councilmembers and councilwomen, for contributing to this discussion. So if nobody else has any other reports, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Mayor, is there a subset to this item? For the City Clerk Department, I think?
Yes.
Oh, did I miss one? Okay. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Starr. So continuing on item H, this is from the City Clerk Department, the CAGS. The recommendation that the mayor, with the approval of the city council, make the following appointments. And I'll read the six items here. Number one is to the Community Relations Commission, Tiffany Lopez for District III and Megan Salas for District VI. The, number two, the Cultural Arts Commission, Sandra Diaz for District III and Alyssa Torres for District VI. Number three, to the Parks Recreation Community Services Commission, Joe Garcia for District II and Angela Wycombe for District IV. And number four, to the Planning Commission, Ronald Aruejo for District IV and Dr. Miguel Lopez for District VI. Five, to Senior Services Commission, Gloria Apostol for District I, Gloria Massey Chania for District III, and Linda Calderon for District VI. And number six, to Measure O Citizen Oversight Committee, Stephen Nash for District I, Noemi Valdez for District II, Ronald Aruejo for District III, Ruben Dudas for District IV. And that is it. I think we have a public speaker for this item as well. Ronald Aruejo, if you want to come up?
Good evening, Mayor MacArthur, Mayor Protem Turan, and city council members. My name is Ronald Aruejo, and I would like to provide my thoughts and a few of the appointments to the city's citizen advisory groups and boards for your approval tonight. I have known both Sandy Diaz for the Cultural Arts Commission and Angela Wycombe for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission during my time on the INCO in their roles as chair of the council of their respective neighborhoods. They are incredibly passionate about serving their neighborhoods, and I have no doubt that they will do so also on their respective appointed positions. I am excited that they will serve Oxnard on these CAGS. I have been able to work with both Dr. Miguel Lopez and Stephen Nash on the Planning Commission for the past few years, and they have been able to effectively analyze, query experts, and comprehend vast amounts of disparate information to come to a solution that works best for the city. Their appointments to the Planning Commission and Measure O Citizen Oversight Committee, respectively, will be of great benefit to the residents of Oxnard, and I look forward to serving with both of them on these CAGS. I would like to end this by thanking both Councilmen Starr for my appointment to the Measure O Citizen Oversight Committee and Councilwoman Rodriguez for my reappointment to the Planning Commission. I look forward to combining my experience as chair of the East Village Neighborhood and utilizing my knowledge from the Oxnard Union High School District's Measure A Bond Oversight Committee and my first term on the Planning Commission to give me the widest range of information to better understand and recommend a course of action if required in both of the CAGS that I have been appointed on. I encourage you all to approve the appointments of Sandra Diaz to the Cultural Arts Commission, Angela Wycombe to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission, Dr. Miguel Lopez to the Planning Commission, and Stephen Nash to the Measure O Citizen Oversight Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ronald. Madam Clerk, before we get into councilmember discussion, is there any other speakers on this item?
That actually concludes our speakers, virtually and in person. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up for discussion. Councilmember Starr?
So Mayor, I guess really this is kind of in your hands because you're the one that actually does the appointment with our approval. So maybe you'd be the one to make the motion.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there any other, anybody? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Mr. Aruejo for his comments. I appreciate that members of the public come out and not only thank the councilmembers who recommended them for appointment, but also provide input on those whom they know in the community who are also serving in different capacities and are wishing to either start serving or continue serving in one of our citizen advisory groups. I just want to thank everybody who applied and has gotten to this point for appointment. And I know Councilmember Perlo might, well, I guess I'm done, so. I know Councilmember Perlo might state this, but I give him full credit for it, that these folks are fully volunteers and they don't get a cup of coffee, they don't get a tank of gas. I served on the Parks and Recreation Community Services Commission from 2017 to 2021, and I enjoyed almost every single moment of it. There are some great lessons I took from that, but also I got to see many of the operational wins and challenges that our city has in our recreation department and through public works through our parks. And I think that has given me some really great foundational information in transitioning into council. From that, I've also served with Commissioner or Chair Wycombe from the Parks and Rec Community Services Commission. And I agree with what was said, that she certainly is passionate and always has community in mind in what she does and how she does it. And so I appreciate that she was willing to reapply and that Councilwoman Rodriguez is recommending her for reappointment. I would like to thank Mr. Garcia. I did have a vacancy on the same commission. And Mr. Garcia had reached out to me last year regarding a concern he had and an idea he had with regards to recreation. And in sitting down with him and talking with him, it was great to see just the passion and level of knowledge he had on the subject. And I, when I learned that he may or may not be reappointed to the commission and I had a vacancy, I was more than happy to chat with him and we kind of shared some of our vision and see where we had overlap and was happy to make that recommendation that he be appointed, or reappointed to the commission as well. And lastly, for the Planning Commission, for Commissioner Dr. Lopez and for currently Chair Aruejo, I want to thank both of them as well. They have certainly dedicated quite a bit of time. I learned early on in my, in my role as a councilmember that I actually can't just read the staff report on the Planning Commission when things come to us from them and get the full picture. I appreciate the work staff puts in the staff reports, but my mind works very visually on things. And when I had the opportunity, I realized I need to watch those meetings to see what was asked, how the interactions happened, and what the motions were that led to what's being recommended to council. So they get stacks of documents that are higher than my laptop screen here probably and are expected to go through that and be prepared to deliberate and make important decisions when it comes to land use and planning for our city. So I want to thank both of them for reapplying, and I hope that, you know, my colleagues will hear that and consider their reappointment. And then lastly, lastly, my apologies for Measure O Oversight Committee. Thank you again to Noemi Valdez for reapplying. She served very well as a District II representative, and I appreciate her returning. And I see some familiar names on there as well. I appreciate everyone dedicating their time to Measure O and that oversight. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Perlo?
Yes, I would like to thank Councilmember Perez for appointing Ms. Calderon. Ms. Calderon was going to not possibly be reappointed. And the reason was I had been, I had had the opportunity to appoint her in the past, but being that she does not live in District I and there was an opening, I shared with assistance from the city clerk to inform me that was going on. And I want to thank you. Thank you very much. This woman is an asset to that organization. I'd also like to thank Mr. Nash for reapplying for the Planning Commission. I believe he's a tremendous asset. He asks questions. He tries to keep things focused, and he's not afraid to ask questions and ask follow-up questions. But more importantly, I'd like to thank everyone that has served, has served, possibly is no longer serving because they're termed out, applied, or has been reappointed possibly with this action. It's a lot of work. And again, Councilmember Turan is right. Mayor Protem Turan is right. They do it without a cup of coffee or a tank of gas. Hopefully that'll be rectified. I don't know what the level that Mr. Aruejo is recommending, but hopefully they'll change in the future. Thank you. Specifically on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Did you, anybody, any other comments or nothing? I'll, yeah, absolutely.
Just a quick question for the clerk, just so the public can hear this as well, Madam Clerk. These are not the end-all of everyone being appointed. We have some who are in process of background check and some other steps. Is that correct?
Mayor Protem Turan, that is correct. We will be coming back to the city council on April 15th with some additional appointments and then just continue until we completely fill all the positions. But we would encourage everybody to continue to apply. Their applications are good for four years. We'll keep them on file in the event that somebody resigns or whatever. So we highly encourage everybody to visit oxnard.gov to download the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, can you ask what exactly the processes with the background check? I think public watching may be interested in what that is.
Sure, absolutely. Madam Clerk, Councilmember Perlo was asking if you can just very briefly comment on what the background check entails for a candidate wanting to serve in a CAG?
Mayor, Councilmember Perlo, I know that there is a form that they have to fill out. They go to the police department, get fingerprinted, and then they go through the Department of Justice and do a background. Beyond that, I don't have any additional information to share.
Thank you very much. And that is to protect the city of Oxnard.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Calderon, thank you for being here. And Ron, thank you. This is a great list. I certainly respect my colleagues here on council and their recommendations. So I honor their recommendations and fully support them. So I make a motion that we accept the recommendation as indicated. Thank you, Councilmember Perlo. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Betis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
And Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
And that motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next item on the agenda. This is the review of the Information Consent Agenda. Do any members of council have any questions or anything they wish to discuss on this consent agenda? Yes, Councilmember Starr?
Two, three, and four.
Okay. Yeah, two, three, and four. Anyone else? Any other item?
And Mayor, just for the record, on Information and Consent Agenda, item number K1, the minutes for February 18th, I listed one of the reports as M2, and it should be M5. And that was the discussion on the city treasure. So for the record, it should be M5, not M2. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember?
With that recommendation by the city clerk of that correction, I would move that we rec, that we approve item one and then go into discussion on the other items.
Sure. I second that motion.
Thank you. Councilwoman Betis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
And Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
And the motion carries 7 to 0 on item K1. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perlo. Then we'll move to K2. This is for the Fire Department. This is an agreement regarding field training for paramedic students. The recommendation from the Fire Department is that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a paramedic emergency medical technician, EMT student education agreement. It's a field internship with the California Firefighter Joint Apprenticeship Committee, CalJack, for a term ended December 31, 2027. Chief, do you want to give a quick overview of this item and then we'll open it up for discussion? And Madam Clerk, I don't know if there's any public speakers on this item?
Mayor, we do not have any public speakers virtually or in person for the Information and Consent Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Guthrie, do you want to just give us just a quick overview?
Yeah, my name is Carson Guthrie, Assistant Fire Chief. And thank you for this time. Real quick, this is an agreement with CalJack. It's an organization that we get some reimbursement for, for our training hours. They provide some training throughout the state, and this agreement is for the paramedic program where part of the paramedic training is an internship phase. We send our interns out to a number of different agencies. We train in-house. Sometimes we send them to Ventura County. We've sent them down to LA City in different areas. With CalJack, because they're, the way their organization is set up, they need to send some of their students out for the internship phase. So they're interested in entering into an agreement with us where they could send their students to Oxnard to do some training and get some field exercises in. We think that the cost will be about $800 per student, and we think we'll probably be training about three to four over the course of this agreement. So that's the net cost to us. But again, the benefit is that it's kind of a reciprocal environment where we need to send our students out and people receive our students. And then we also take students in from other agencies. So that's kind of the high-level view. I don't know if you have any other questions about that.
Councilmember Starr, do you have any specific questions of the chief?
I guess, I guess first, just a statement. It sounds like a very cost-effective way to recruit people, and I'm definitely in favor of us doing this. I have a, actually, I have a technical question here. I was, this was item D2 during the council committee meeting of March 11. And there was a little technical issue, just I don't know whose response, who takes care of this sort of thing, but the incorrect link was provided for the pre-recorded video. There was actually two items by the Fire Department that evening, and both of them had the same had the same link. So I did find, I eventually went to the city's YouTube site and found that other little video, which I was unable to watch, but the problem there was that apparently that one was not recorded with sound, whereas the other one was. So the good news is that the report itself was in-depth enough that I was able to, you know, come to a conclusion based on that. But I just want you to be aware that there, there's a little bit of technical issues going on with that. Councilmember?
Real quick, you made a good point right at the beginning that I wanted to not gloss over and that is that this is an opportunity for us to look at students from other areas and in this recurring environment, that's important and it can save us quite a bit of time and money. But also to your point, apologies on the, yeah, the technical issue. I'm sure you could reach out if you have any questions, but I'm glad you were able to find the information you needed.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion of this item? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Perlo, go ahead.
Serving on that committee, the report and the question and answer and the back and forth with the committee on this particular item was tremendous. Support this fully. Thank you, Mr. Starr, for bringing up the issue that you brought up.
Thank you, Councilmember Perlo. There's no further comment on this. We'll go to the next item. It's K three. This is the monthly investment report for the period ending February 28th, 2025. The recommendation is that this is an information item for the city council to receive and file. Councilmember Starr, you have some questions on that? Go ahead.
Just really, it's a request for in future reports. So in the part of the report that displays the portfolio summary statistics, it's really difficult to make out the numbers. And when I looked at the online version of the report, zooming in to increase the size of the font wasn't particularly helpful because the image was low resolution, so it was kind of pixelated when you expand it. So I, my only request is that if we can kind of look at that, especially for those of us who are getting older eyes, it's getting harder and harder to see this sort of thing. So being able to even look online and expand the text where it's not all pixelated would be helpful.
Yep. It looks like a copy and paste image, so we'll, we'll make sure that gets fixed.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Assistant City Manager. Any other comments or questions on that? If not, we'll move to the next item. This is K four from the Public Works Department. This is an agreement with Honeywell International for fire station alerting system replacement. The recommendation is that the city council approve and authorize a total of 399,000 in project funds for the fire station alerting system replacement project. The mayor to execute an agreement with Honeywell International in the amount of 319,000 approximately for the project and approve a project contingency amount of 47,881 with Honeywell International for a total not to exceed a value of roughly 367,000 for the project. And number three, a project allocation amount of 31,920 for engineering inspection, survey and project management for, for the project. Councilmember Starr, you had a question on, on that item? Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I realize that this is an update to the hardware and software for this fire station alerting system and it's for fire station seven and eight, which I believe are the newest fire stations. And what I'm trying to figure out here is how did it come to be that the older fire stations have the up-to-date fire station alerting systems, but the two newest ones do not? That just seemed kind of strange to me.
Yeah, I'll bring up our project manager, Taylor, and then maybe if there's information that the, one of the fire chiefs want to share, that'd be awesome as well.
Hello, council. My name is Taylor Gambino. I'm the project manager for this project. Those stations were done previously, so these are the last two that need to be done. That's all that there is to it.
Okay. So I guess all these were, this was a change after all these were built and then?
Yes.
We're just now catching up with these?
Correct.
And I got some questions on the exhibit B, scope of work. I assume that CAD in this case is, means computer aided design, but I'm not sure. And I see something called a PTT input, which I assume is push to talk or press to transmit, but I'm not sure. Excuse me.
Councilman Starr, what page are you on?
It's on several pages throughout, actually. So, yeah, thank you. And so I guess, I guess first, is CAD computer aided design or is that something else?
CAD is, is computer aided dispatch. So it's part of our dispatch system.
Okay. And, and PTT is push to talk or push? Okay. And what is COR output?
COR is typically change order requests, so that would be something that would happen later on in the process.
Okay, great. And as far as the annual maintenance fees, it seems like there aren't, there aren't any for this. Am I missing something or it's like it's all included?
It's all rolled into the current price.
So, so the good news is that we won't have these ongoing maintenance fees for software year after year, after year, after year?
For a specific period of time, yes.
How long would that be for?
That was negotiated between the fire department and Honeywell.
Our agreement with Ventura County Dispatch, it's, we're part of a mutual aid system, so we provide services to them in certain areas that is difficult for them to reach. Some of those are the beach communities. They don't have fire stations in like western Port Juaniemi, Silver Strand, that area. Also in the Nylund Acres, we provide service there through the mutual aid system. So through that reciprocity, they've agreed to provide us dispatch at virtually no cost. It's quite a good deal we're getting through them.
Sounds like it. Thank you. And that's all the questions are?
Mayor, may I just add one thing? The, the first question you had asked about the sequence of events, and I, I want to say, and Taylor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the stations were done sort of simplistically first. So stations one through six were a little more simple in terms of installation. Seven and eight were a little more difficult to install. That was part of that answer to the first question that you asked.
By the way, since this is affecting fire station seven, which is in the, oh, the name of that neighborhood, it's just, thank you, River Park. I, I'm going to assume here, unless someone tells me otherwise, that we're paying for this out of the general fund and we're not charging the River Park for that because we've taken the fire protection off of their, their bills, right?
So page eighty-four, the staff report identifies the funding source, general fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Yes, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just have a quick question, just since we're on the subject and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. When we look at the alerting system that is in our fire station or in all of our fire stations, I took a tour of station one, I believe, last year and in conversation was mentioned that the system had been changed where it's not blaring siren or a ringing bell, but it's this kind of gradual alerting of those on staff that there's a call and what's happening. And I believe there is research around that where there's, you know, if they're asleep, you know, in, in their quarters and this blaring alarm goes off, that there are some long-term physiological effects to the firefighters from that. Is this the type of system we're talking about shifting over to or is that different from, from what I was learning about at station one?
All our systems right now are similar to what you described. Prior to me starting, it was just, yeah, a bell going off and then somebody'd have to run and figure out what kind of call it was and write it down and alert everybody. And that bell going off in the middle of the night as you, it takes a toll on the heart rate, right? There's an immediate adrenaline dump and, and that takes its, its toll over time. These newer systems modulate based upon time of day, so at night the, the volume can be drastically reduced. Lights come on, that can indicate which engine, if there's multiple apparatus in the station, it'll indicate which, which one's going responding. If they all go off, then everybody's going and your heart rate still goes up a little bit. But overall, yeah, the, the newer systems are much, much more body friendly, I guess, and to our mental, long-term health. It is something that we're, we're looking at in terms of the mental health of our firefighters. So, yeah.
Great. Thank you for that. And I only bring that up for that, for that reason that you had mentioned, that it's certainly for their long-term health. We want them to be in tip-top shape to serve the community, but they are human beings also. And if research is finding that there are any kind of negative physiological effects to them on any part of this job, I think it's incumbent on us to serve them well, to be able to do their job well, but be well as individuals also. So thank you for sharing that. And I, I learned that. I didn't know and nor had I thought about the type of alarm or system that wakes them up or alerts them to a call. And so it makes perfect sense to me. So I'm glad we're able to continue with those efforts in all of our stations.
Yeah, and we thank you for that support. One, one more point that I wanted to mention is it also helps us respond quickly. So as we're walking to the rig, it's, it's giving us information about the type of call, the location and other details. And you can actually hear radio traffic if there's other things going on. So it's, it gives us quite a bit of information. And then there's also, at some stations, there's a time clock. We have standards where we try to get out the door very quickly. So there'll be a clock by the door that we can measure against to make sure that we're meeting our desired goals for the types of calls that we're going to.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Mr. Perlo, go ahead.
A question from Public Works was mentioned about software. There will be no licensing fee charged to the city? No? I see you shaking your head. The answer, no?
No.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Okay. Thanks, Councilmember. If there are no further comments or anything else to discuss, I call, I mean, what's the pleasure of city council for the city items on the information consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the items two, three and four.
I will second that.
Thank you. I call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Betis?
Yes.
And the motion, excuse me, and the motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item M one. This is from the fire department. The subject is the resolution acknowledging receipt of the fire chief's report on state mandated fire inspections. The recommended action is that the city council adopt a resolution acknowledging receipt of the report prepared by the Oxnard Fire Department's Fire Chief regarding state mandated inspections of specified occupancies as required by sections 131 for 6.2 and 131 for 6.3 of the California Health and Safety Code. I don't know if this could be, before we begin discussion on this item, Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on this item?
Mayor, we do not have any requests to speak in person or virtually for this item M one. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of any councilmembers on this item? Yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember Starr.
Thank you. So of course, this is regarding the fire chief's report on state mandated fire inspections. So I guess my first question is regarding the inspections of R one and R two properties required under Senate Bill 1205. My, my understanding here is that it's a requirement that we inspect these annually?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And given that we don't have the bandwidth to inspect all of them annually, I think we did 38% of the residential group buildings, is there any penalty that the state would impose on us if we fail to meet that requirement?
So the SB 1205, sorry, city, Steve McNaulson, City of Oxford Fire Marshal, thank you for being up here and thank you for your time. The SB 1205 reporting is required because of what happened with the Ghost Ship Fire in Oakland, I believe in 2017. So the, the reason for this is because when it went to the governing body, the governing body had no idea of what the requirements were done by the department. So the state now requires that the governing body acknowledges what our compliance is so that, understanding that us not providing that compliance, we are not meeting the state mandates and you as a council and as a city, we understand that we are not doing that. So that is, there's no penalty from the state, but it is basically stating that we are aware that we are not meeting it.
Okay. And regarding the fire and life safety code inspections, which I guess are a little bit different than the 1205 or they overlap perhaps, can you give us a sense of how often there, there is a violation and what are some of the more common violations that need to be addressed?
So again, common violations are combustibles on the property, like trash, not servicing fire alarms or not servicing fire protection equipment, not servicing fire extinguishers. In apartments, and we've taken a pretty strong campaign against it, is working smoke alarms. So those are some of the overall violations and it, it ranges depending on the, the occupancy.
Okay. And, and in the report, there is mention of supply chain issues as one of the challenges that we're experiencing and particularly your, the department's need for new capital apparatus, which I assume means a fire engine.
Yes. So the, the issue we have currently is the amount of staffing, the amount of workload, right? So the residential occupancies for the apartments and condominiums and hotels are primarily done by the responding fire engines. So being able to have working equipment, being able to, you know, their normal workload with other operations going on, day emergency responses, having them be able to, you know, organize and inspect those properties. And then when they have an issue, they refer it over to a fire prevention inspector to follow up on violations. And then the fire inspectors also do the schools and the high rises and the other higher, higher hazard occupancies. So yes, capital apparatus technology has been one of the problems and staffing and vacancies and turnovers.
Okay. And since this report we've done annually, I do have requests that the statistics in the following year's reports include the comparable, comparable figures for prior years so we can kind of see the trends.
So we can, I can provide that to you and we do have that in resolution from last year.
Okay.
I think the year prior as well.
Okay. Yeah, just, I just want to understand the, how the demands on the department are changing over time. I see you already have on the report, over time, the calls for service, but there are other stats that you had as well. Also, I believe it was Councilmember Perlo that mentioned at the committee meeting, it would be nice to see comparisons with other jurisdictions to see how we rank and I, I don't know whether that was something that can be delivered in a future report or if that's.
So I do, I do have that available.
You're awesome. Thank you.
I can provide that. I wasn't sure if it was already provided to you.
There hasn't.
So.
It's special.
Any? So, yeah, if, if you happen, I guess I don't expect you to recite them off from memory, but definitely at some point, would love to see how we compare it with other jurisdictions when it comes to this.
So off the top of, currently with our neighbors in Ventura County, Ventura County proper is 100% compliant. Fillmore is 100% compliant. Ventura City is about 77% compliant. And then I went through other jurisdictions such as Ossenschli, Huntington Beach, Modesto, Chula Vista. So the majority, I went through eight different jurisdictions. The majority of the jurisdictions were 100% compliant. There were Modesto and Santa Rosa. Both were within 50 to 70% compliance. But besides Ventura and those other two, the others were 100% compliant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fire Marshal.
Question.
McDonald. Yes, yes, Mr. Perlo.
When you, I really appreciate that. When you mentioned Ventura County, does that mean the cities that Ventura County has fire stations in or is it simply Ventura County areas that are not in municipal city limits?
No, it is all contracted cities within Ventura County. So that includes Camarillo, Juaniemi, Oha.
Or is it simply Ventura County areas that are not in municipal city limits?
No. It is all contracted cities within Ventura County. So, that includes Camarillo, Owainimi, Ojai, Simi, Moore Park, Thousand Oaks, all jurisdictions, all cities incorporated, unincorporated in the county.
Thank you. Thank you for the good work you guys are doing. Thank you. And I understand there's never enough people. We're doing the best that we can. That's not an excuse, it's just a fact, and facts and evidence matter. I really appreciate what you guys are doing and what you're up against when there's a shortage of people. Thank you.
Thank you. What's, there are no further questions? What's the desire of council on this item?
I move the recommended action.
Okay. I'm sorry.
One second.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is item M2.
Could take a vote on it.
Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. We'll take, we'll take a vote, Madam Clerk, on this item.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temperan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua? Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perallo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beres?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
And that motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I thank you, Councilmember Starr, for pointing that out. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, item M2. This is from the Finance Department. The subject, Public Project Agreement with Onex Paving Company for Citywide Neighborhood Street Resurfacing Project. It's Phase One. This is for Cabrillo, Sea Air, El Rio West, Rose Park, Pleasant Valley, and South Winds Neighborhood. The recommended actions that City Council approve and authorize, a total of $7,207,209.50 in project funds for the Citywide Neighborhood Street Resurfacing Project, Phase One. And number two, that the mayor executed agreement with Onex Paving Company in the amount of $6,600,607 for the project and approved a project contingency amount of $600,000, roughly, with Onex Paving Company, Inc., for a total not to exceed value of $6,606,608.50. And number three, project allocation amount of $600,601 for engineering inspection, survey, and project management for the project. And number four, a total amount of budget appropriations of $215,946, consisting of $127,968 from the Water Operating Fund, $87,978 from the Waste Water Operating Fund, available fund balances, as well as the corresponding Capital Outlay Fund. Appropriations increase in the same amounts for this project. And five, and unappropriations of $158,998 from the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Fund, as well as the corresponding Capital Outlay Fund appropriation decrease in the same amount for this project. And just as a reminder, this did not originate in the committee. This is a capital improvement project. Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick item for correction for the public, and it's a typo I noticed on your notes. It mentioned it was the Finance Department, but it's a Public Works project in front of us, Project Works, or Public Works Agreement. But I know that that's, I noticed that, the typo. That's all right. No worries. We have Mr. Wolf here. We don't have to get Javier down here and hustle down here, right? I do have a quick question about this. I appreciate all the information that was placed in the staff report. It's incredibly comprehensive. One thing that I noted, that I know we had spoken about before, was the plan was from the, from last calendar year, going into this fiscal year, that the Colonia neighborhood would be the next, on the list for the next phase of their paving. I note that in the staff report, it does reference that. There are some right-of-way disagreements with a few property owners. To what degree we can, and I know the staff report says that, but if we could just update that for the record on why we're moving on to these projects for the time being, and what needs to happen between now and then for Colonia's next phase?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works. I forgot to say that for the last item, so. So, yes, we did write that in the staff report. This time last year, actually, April 2nd of last year, we, we brought to council the pavement management program, and we talked about the different phases that we're recommending going forward. And we put forward several maps to the council, identified different phases for residential arterial and alleyways. And the next phase for the neighborhood streets was the, what is technically the Phase Three of the Colonia area. And we have been working on the design for that. In fact, the design is complete for that. We are, we are really confident in the fact that the city's right-of-way, the property lines, we, we are confident in where those are. We have reached out, in fact, our project manager for that project is also here as well, did a lot of work, a lot of legwork out there, going door-to-door and talking to property owners, identifying where the property lines are. It gets a, I think property owners get a little confused where property lines may be. They kind of go off where their fence may, is, their fence is, and, and that's not necessarily where the property line is. Sometimes those front fences creep into the right-of-way, unbeknownst to them maybe from previous property owners, things like that. So, we have done a lot of work in identifying where that right-of-way line is supposed to be, and we're down to about five property owners now where there's some disagreement where that property line is. As most of you probably know, we have a responsibility for ADA compliance. We have a responsibility for constructing sidewalks to certain standards, and we want to make sure that we're doing that one and one time only when we're actually out there doing it. So, instead of delaying the next neighborhood project, we, the design team has moved forward with the next phase of the neighborhood, which is this phase. And we didn't want to wait. Prices sometimes don't get cheaper, and so, we didn't want to waste any time working out those right-of-way issues. And so, we're bidding this, this project now in the hopes of getting those five property owners to understand the right-of-way areas and bid out that Colonia project as the next neighborhood project. We are actually getting closer to obtaining what I, in my mind, are sort of a belt-and-suspender's approach. We, we already have track maps, and we have parcel maps, and we're going to go ahead and get some title reports for those five properties so that we can confirm what we suspect are the, not suspect, but we believe are the right-of-way lines for those properties.
Thank you for that. And appreciate the transparency and the update on that. Just the last piece of that puzzle for me for the Colonia, just so, just so the public's aware, when these folks are approached, and I believe a letter or some messaging is delivered to them, which would be a public document, can we just briefly share it, just to outline what, what is shared with them and the offer that's made to them as far as correcting the right-of-way lines? And if they have a fence there, how the fence, you know, we don't just demolish it and say good luck to you. Can you share a little bit of what the work with the property owners has been in this?
Yeah, we actually did a presentation to one of the groups that were out there, and then the staff actually went out door-to-door and spoke to, I don't know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 30 property owners. And we shared with them that the way this would work is that, hey, you know, your property line actually is here, not necessarily where your fence is. And as part of our project, what we would do is we would move the fence, relocate the fence back to the property line or away from where it is today, and establish a new fence line. We would build the sidewalk. Again, I may have missed this the first time, but part of our project in that area is a Safe Bouts to School project. We're building sidewalks for, for safe passages for children. There's several schools over there. And so, part of our project would be then to relocate their private property fence so that we can construct those sidewalks. Now, on the backside of that, if they have some movable objects that are their private, private objects, they would be responsible for moving, you know, if they had a, a plant or box or something like that. But we would go ahead and reestablish the fence as part of our project. And I think there's some places that we would be removing the trees, if I recall correctly, as part of our project, if the, if those trees are in the way of, of the new fence line. So, there is some work that we would do as part of our project, but any of those sort of movable objects that are like planters, stuff like that, the property owner would be responsible for. So, we, that's, that's laid out in the, in the letter, was discussed with the property owner or the, the person that's present at the site on multiple occasions. I think you went out a couple of times to certain properties and had a conversation a couple of times. And then, we had roughly 22 folks that, that agreed, understood what that issue is, and now we're down to about five folks that, that want some more information.
Sure.
Great. Thank you very much for that information. I really appreciate it. I appreciate you and the staff and project managers' efforts to work with residents on this, instead of this kind of contentious relationship. So, thank you. I'll turn it back to the mayor.
If I may add, oh, sorry, if I'm just going to add, so, the staff has actually done projects out there in the past, and has been an issue out there. And so, we wanted to take a, a little different approach this time, instead of having those conflicts while the contractor is out there and we're constructing it, sort of lessons learned from the last time we were out there.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Perallo, go ahead.
The attorney, in, as, this is still a learning thing for even myself being on here quite a while. On a discussion where it gets like this, and there's the potential for litigation, can we talk about this? I mean, I'm looking for advice, and I know you're sitting in for Steve. I'm not putting, I am putting you on the spot, not on purpose. Just, I'm trying to learn some, so that we don't repeat any mistakes in the past.
This isn't getting into any type of discussion of a threat of litigation. They're talking about coordinating a public project with the neighbors in the area who do have valid concerns. Where property lines are is not always clear-cut. It's a difficult issue. And, and even if there was going to be a threat of litigation along down the line here, the facts are publicly discoverable. There's really nothing to hide, and I, I think we would want to avoid litigation at all costs and, and being as transparent as possible at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is a benefit.
With that, Mayor, I'd like to share this.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
One of the first times that I was taken to a neighborhood council meeting in La Colonia, it was a wonderful event. It had to do with something similar, not exactly, but something very similar. And the residents were finding out that up to 15 feet of their front yard belonged to the City of Oxford. And you can imagine what that was like and how quickly I got out of that neighborhood with my life. And it was because I represented the City of Oxford. And the city was doing everything that they could, but I'd like to tie that in with something that took place tonight at the very beginning. We had an issue here with the realtors, and we have a member of the council who's very probably, okay, very probably aware of some of the things that may be going on when people don't disclose. And when they don't disclose, and somebody buys, and you buy on the assumption, and you trust a realtor, and you have title insurance, and something goes AWIRE, you find out you're left holding a bag. And sometimes, the bag is not a good bag to be holding. The issue, and I really appreciate that the staff is going through this, because I remember what it was like before. And when you find out that X number of feet of your front yard is not yours, but there are laws that make it that you have to be able to have ADA compliance, a sidewalk's got to be so wide, and telephone poles are in the center of the sidewalk, you can't get by. There are issues that the City of Oxford is trying to improve. And I remember working with the previous councilmember representing in that area, councilmember Oscar Madrigal. There were meetings that were, as the Public Works has addressed, they can get a little bit, not so much contentious, but they can get very lively, and trying to avoid that. I appreciate the work you're going through and the things that you'll be facing down the road. And sometimes, no matter what you have in the way of facts and evidence, some people will not believe you. And then, that goes somewhere else. So, just want to share that, the heads-up, councilmembers, because this is an area of Oxford that things were done decades and decades ago that probably shouldn't have been done, but that's what happened.
Thanks for the insight, Councilmember. Do you have some?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I just wanted to thank you, Michael Wolf, for this item here, the capital improvement, really showcasing the map specifically for South Winds on page, I believe it's 192. So, for those that are interested to see what area in South Winds, what particular streets, that's where the map is. But yeah, I just wanted to thank you for that work and for bringing an opportunity like this to District Six in the South Winds neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perez. Go ahead, Councilmember Starr.
Just to clarify, on the right-of-way issue in Colonia, are these properties on Cooper off-chance? Or is it, are there other streets involved?
I think there's maybe, is there still one on Cooper?
There's at least one.
Yeah. There's, there's, we think there's at least two that's still on Cooper. One is the business, right? That's on the corner there. Yeah.
Okay. I, I remember the mayor mentioned to me at one point some issues on Cooper, and I didn't know whether this is the same thing.
That's exactly that.
Okay. I, I'd like to say, first of all, I really like the fact that we had four bidders on this. And that just gives me a lot of confidence that we're able to get the value that we need to get for our, our taxpayers here. So, so my understanding is that, from where I'm reading here, is that 77% of these streets will be improved using the mill and overlay asphalt paving method because they're particularly deteriorated. I guess I'd like, for the benefit of all of us in the public, can you please describe what that method is and contrasting it to like slurry seals?
So, we typically talk about pavement work sort of in two big buckets, corrective versus preventative work. And so, the mill and fill is sort of a colloquial, or maybe just kind of a, an easy way of talking about corrective maintenance. And so, what we'll do in that fashion is we'll take some of the existing asphalt off. We'll, we'll, we'll actually remove it, and not necessarily taking it all the way down to the base material. It's still, and, and, and that's based off of the evaluation done by the engineer, also based off the evaluation that's done through the pavement condition index, you know, where there's still some structural integrity of the, of the, of the asphalt below what's typically called the wearing course, or the kind of the top layer of asphalt. Below that, you have the structural courses below that. And so, we'll take off the top course, inch and a half, two inches, which could be referred to as the wearing course. We'll remove that and then put in asphalt back. That's called milling out and filling. That's, that's a typical process. Sometimes, what we do in that same fashion is we'll mill out, and we'll do an overlay where we may, may build up a little bit more. So, we may take out an inch and a half and put back two inches on top. So, it depends on, you know, the conditions that are out there. There's things to think about, like drainage patterns. There's things to think about, structural integrity. There's things to think about, about in terms of how thick is the existing asphalt? How much can we take out? How much can we put back? So, there's, there's a lot of things that go into this, and it's all based on the evaluation from the engineer. Sometimes, we take core samples of the existing asphalt thickness to, to dictate that. But those are all on the prevent, the corrective side of the house, where we're going to take out some of the asphalt. And then, on the, on the very extreme end of the corrective work is taking it all the way down to, to, to native, or even, you know, past the base or to native, where we're going to take it all out. We did that on doors. And you, some of you have seen that work, where we're going all the way down to the base, where the, the base material is just still, it's not useful anymore, and so, we have to go all the way down to the bottom. So, that's the corrective side of the house. And we try to stay out of that because it's very, very expensive. The other bucket is the preventative side of the house, where you can think of, you know, for just kind of rules of thumb, PCIs in the maybe mid-50s to higher, you can start looking at some sort of preventative work where you're doing a crack seal, trying to seal some of those larger cracks with some material that will fill it. And then, on top of that, you can put a slurry seal. And then, depending again on the, on, on the existing asphalt, you may even do a cape seal where you're adding some rock on top of that. And so, you've seen this in some places where you, we will add an aggregate on top of it that embeds aggregate in, in an emulsion. And then, we'll do the slurry, a fog seal or a slurry seal on top of it. It's called, kind of called a cape seal. Again, that's on the, sort of the maintenance side of the house, or the, the preventative maintenance side of the house. And then, in between those two, you have thin-layer maintenance overlays. And so, we can talk hours about this if you wanted to. But, but those, the, the two things we're talking about today really are the, sort of the corrective maintenance side of the house, that mill and fill, and then the slurry seal and the crack fill.
Right. So, so just so that people understand, we, we do have this pavement condition index, PCI, it's a score from zero to 100. I assume 100 is a brand-new street, and zero is probably just gravel. So, the ones where we're using this mill and overlay pavement approach, that's that's where we've got scores of between like 30 and 40, and the stuff that's for s- uh, slurry seal, it's much higher, maybe 60?
Yeah, it's, I, I, again, I'm trying not to put exact numbers on it because it, you have to go out there and look at it, because, you know, each, each of the degradations that we're talking about has its own, um, response. And so depending on what type of asphalt degradation dictates what type of, um, maintenance it gets. And so if you're talking about aggregate cracking versus block cracking versus, you know, running and shoving, there's different types of degradation that get, that gets different types of treatment.
So with the work that's done with this mill and overlay approach, does that bring the PCI score up to 100 for those streets or to a different score?
For which type of, of approach?
When, when you, when you're using that mill and overlay approach, does it get us to 100 or is it?
No, it won't take it to 100, no.
Okay.
No, not, not typically.
Okay. And is, I, I, I saw mentioned here that we had this, we're incorporating rubberized asphalt. I'm wondering, is that something that, is all the work being done with rubberized asphalt, or is it some of the conventional asphalt?
So, um, typically the wearing course is, um, rubberized asphalt. I got the bid sheet here. Hold on a second. Is all the tons?
Most I just wanted you to take the opportunity to kind of expand upon what rubberized asphalt is and kind of describe its pros and cons for people so that they know that we're doing something that's effective for the public.
Yeah, so not all of it's rubberized asphalt, so there's going to be certain portions that are conventional asphalt. So typically, the wearing course on top is the rubberized asphalt.
Okay. And, and, and you're, are there certain pros and cons with using that approach as opposed to conventional?
So the rubberized asphalt's a little more expensive, and that's typically why Cal Recycle tends to give us some grants for it, but it also provides, um, um, a reduction in sound. So it's actually pretty good for using on the top course, the wearing course. Um, but it's also is a, um, good for the environment, because it, uh, you know, gets to be reducing the, it's made out of tires, made out of used tires, and so it has a environmental, um, it's good for the environment, and it actually reduces the noise from the, from vehicles, uh, using it.
Okay. So sometimes I've noticed that, um, and other people point out to me that we'll fix streets, maybe it's with a slurry seal method, not sure, but it seems like we get potholes at the next rain, at least I've, I've seen that on, on, uh, Rice, for example. Uh, I was wondering, do we ever have times when the work is done and you think it's subs- standard, and if, if that does happen, what do we do to ensure that the work actually meets standard?
So we get a one-year warranty from the contractor. Um, we actually have, um, when I first got here, I think we had some issues on C Street from the work that was done, and we had the contractor come back out. Um, and so in those situations, if it's within that warranty period, well, the contractor come back out. There are certain methods, um, that last certain periods of time, and, and those decisions are made based on, um, the conditions that are there. Uh, we, I would ask for $200 million. If we had $200 million, uh, I'm not, uh, I would be very, very selfish, um, and want to pave every street that we have, um, but we can't. And so we have to pick and choose which streets we, we look at. Um, if we don't do preventative maintenance, we're never going to catch up. Uh, we gotta actually do preventative maintenance to keep good streets good. Um, you'll hear that from Morgan, our city engineer. It's a really good mantra, right? And so, um, but back to your question is, if it's not done right and it's within that warranty period, we will make sure the contractor does it. Now, if it's, and, and the city attorney can speak a little bit better to this than, than I can, but there's also latent defects kind of processes that we can do if it's after that one-year warranty period, but, uh, we, we have to prove that, uh, through that, through a different process.
Have we ever pursued something like that in the past?
We could. That would be a construction defect, um, litigation. We would more than likely require outside counsel. It would be a battle of the experts, essentially. Those can be very expensive, so we would want to probably only undertake something like that if we are seeing consistent failures across an entire project. Um, pretty uncommon for streets and roadwork. I don't think we've ever undertaken one.
I have not done it here. I have done it in different agencies where I had seen, um, um, it's a degradation called raveling. It actually happened right outside the one-year period, raveling, where you actually see the, um, aggregate actually come, come loose. Um, and it was right outside the one-year period, and we were able to pull some of the tickets from the asphalt, and it, it was outside the, the limits, and so we were actually able to get the contractor to come back in and, and basically mill out the, the asphalt and, and, um, apply different asphalt, but it's, uh, it's pretty few and far between that.
So I assume we have some sort of inspection?
Correct.
That we do when?
That's correct.
Contractors do the work.
Right. So, uh, if you looked at, um, I think it's the, one of the recommendation items where we talk about the, um, engineering and inspection services, we do, um, have our in-house inspectors, and also we do QA QC. So we, we actually will do testing, uh, we'll, we'll either take it to a lab or we do our own testing as well.
And, and my last question for the city attorney, uh, maybe a one-year warranty is too short. Is, is it, is there an option to ever have a, a two-year warranty or a three-year warranty with this type of stuff?
We could ask for all sorts of stuff in our specifications and in our bid packages. I think we probably would not get people, um, bidding on this, because two, three years out is a, a pretty long period of time, um, as these streets, especially if you're, they're high-travel routes, they do, you get into a normal wear and tear, and it becomes very difficult to, um, prove that there's a problem or for them to come back and fix for a three-year period.
Thank you. I really appreciate the answers to all my questions.
And if I just may add to that, I, I think that, that there's a, there's a certainly a fine line there of seeing that number get creep higher a, as you start putting those, uh, additional requirements on it, and then the number of bidders, uh, reducing. And so there's certainly a fine line. When you start to deviate what, from what would be typically standard across the industry from a one-year warranty, so.
Right. There's certain risk analysis you have to do there.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Perillo, go ahead.
Yes, and Councilman Starr, I'd like to add something that might maybe even unaware of. When Harbor was paved basically by the junction of Harbor and Channel Islands, there was a problem with the asphalt that they bought. The asphalt, I believe the plant was located in Santa Paula, did not provide what they wanted, and, um, the city caught it, and the inspectors caught it, and there was a choice. They could do the entire work over or come to an accommodation. They came to an accommodation. So there is a tremendous amount of specing, um, inspection going on, and I can't tell you if it's inspection based on, uh, inspection companies we hire or city staff, but I know that the people do check the work, and I feel very comfortable with, with the work that they're doing. But one thing that I would like to bring and ask Public Works, and probably put him on the spot, if we were not under litigation and having our bond money tied up, we'd be doing more work than we're doing and possibly doing higher grade than what we are trying to stretch the dollars that we have now? Or maybe that's something for the city attorney to address, or, or maybe that is not supposed to be asked as I, as I asked it.
Like I said, uh...
But I needed to, I needed to share that for the general public. This council years ago made, proved, made decisions and took actions to take care of the streets so we wouldn't have, as you and I do also here, recently I just got it from a harbor commissioner telling me how bad a certain street was, um, and in fact, I disagree with him because it's just been repaved. But the issue that comes up, the council did take the action, did put themselves on the line to benefit the City of Oxnard residents, to get the high quality of streets that the City of Oxnard residents desire, but through legislative action, I think you may be aware of it, um, we are not able to use those funds. That's all my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perillo. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on this item?
Um, Mayor MacArthur, we do not have any speakers virtually or in person for this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there no, uh, yes, go ahead, Mayor MacArthur.
Uh, one last question. I know this is fairly standard, but, um, for the residents who will be seeing, uh, these projects come to their neighborhoods, uh, I believe it's typically written into the scope of work or the agreement with the contractor, um, the amount of notice that residents will be given if there's going to be a closure of their street or no allowed parking, uh, do we have, uh, can we share now what that is, if we know what that is that's written in there for notice to the public?
I'll actually bring up Ms. Flynn, who's our project manager, she can talk about those notices.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Um, we do a notice at the beginning of the project to all residents that will be adjacent to any construction, and then, uh, four days prior to any construction, they get another notice, and then another notice two days prior. And sometimes we also put up message boards to let residents know a little more information.
Okay. And are those for calendar days or for business days?
Um, business days.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Perillo, go ahead.
May I ask a question, Ms. Flynn? Um, with respect to the signage that you put up, you're talking about the like four-by-eight plywood's?
Um, no, the ones that, that flash.
So it's a, it's electronic, okay, because I just got basically crucified about the signage that we put up for projects coming up for development, that people can't read them going 65 miles an hour, and they're not put in a site where a car can go over and read them. That's the only reason I asked you that question. Thank you.
So, so the ones that we use for our projects typically are the changeable message signs, the, the lighted ones, yeah.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, uh, what's, what's the desire of council on this item?
Oh, I just wanted to, um, thank you all for being efficient and not waiting, you know, for the project that is being held up. I think earlier in the conversation, I wanted to just mention that. I didn't see any projects for District 4, but that's okay, because I see a great need in, uh, South Oxnard and other areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the recommended action, Mayor.
I'll second.
Wonderful. We have motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we get the vote?
Excuse me, Mayor Protem Turan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Councilmember Perillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
And Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. That's item M3. This is from the city attorney's office. Committee bylaws revision. The recommended action is that the city council adopt a resolution amending the bylaws for city council committees. Madam Clerk, are there any, uh, public comments on this item?
Um, Mayor MacArthur, we do not have any virtual speakers or in person, thank, for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any comments of staff on this? Yes, Councilmembers, go ahead.
I think just a recommendation for future change in, uh, the bylaws here. One thing I've noticed is the last few finance committee meetings have been canceled, and as a result, uh, the other meetings that happen later, there's a delay until they start. It'd be great if there was some sort of, um, flexibility where if, let's say, finance and governance wasn't meeting, that the Public Works and Transportation would start at that finance and governance time, and we can move up the community services to where Public Works is at that time. So that way people don't have to stay as late. So it'd just be good to have that sort of flexibility, but other, overall, though, I think what we've done here is great, and I'm, I'm in favor of this change, but I think we can consider that for the future.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Perillo.
Isn't, city attorney, isn't the staff put this out so that there's a calendar, so people can see it quite a bit in advance to know that whether the meeting's canceled or not, this is the set time, and if we start moving, the times are on? The idea is great. Having been stuck on the council meeting that is 8:30 every night, um, I didn't get a chance to, to bounce out like some others did. Um, we, um, would potentially move around and fool around with the public's ability to pay attention and be involved. Am I out in left field or am I in the ballpark?
I'll speak on behalf of the administration. Uh, while staff would love to have that flexibility, uh, I believe it's better for the public to keep the constant routine so that they can rely on, particularly these meetings, that are, uh, set for a whole year. So I, I think it's just better to keep them where they are, and I know, again, some of the staff would be thrilled if we could have, um, you know, advance a few of the meetings occasionally, but I think it's better to keep the schedule.
I would concur for consistency.
Yeah. This is what people can rely on, so they know exactly when to come here.
Yeah. I concur. Yeah, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for the question on that, council member. Um, it does bring back to mind a conversation I had with a member of the public, um, on two occasions, and, uh, the previous one was, uh, for the Public Works Committee when we went over, because we were having incredibly robust discussion on the agenda item in front of us, and I note that the last, um, housing and, um, housing committee and public safety, that, that was a very good discussion, and the meeting did go longer, but it was, it was the last meeting, so, you know, it didn't run into other meetings. Um, but the discussion I had with the member of the public stemmed from the public safety, or excuse me, the Public Works Committee, and prior to that, the, um, February 18th city council meeting where we had the, um, PAC agreement on the agenda as well as, uh, the large item for the city treasurer, and the question posed was, why didn't you just start earlier at 4 o'clock or 4:30, and, um, knowing that we had other items, you know, on, on the regular agenda? And, um, I knew the answer to that, but perhaps we wouldn't mind sharing, you know, even with these committee meetings or larger council meetings, why we do not start earlier. And I don't know if the city attorney or the city manager, assistant city manager, I see they're all drawing straws to see who answers that.
So, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Turan, um, in the presentation, I, I made reference to that a little bit, and, um, I, I think a lot of people know that in November of 2020, voters, um, adopted Measure M, and, uh, Measure M, um, within it stipulates that no, uh, meetings of city legislative bodies will begin before 5 o'clock PM, and so we were bound by that, and so that is, uh, that is the earliest any meeting will start is 5 o'clock.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted that, uh, another reminder for the public that, uh, this is why we would not start earlier, even for, uh, meetings we fully anticipate are going to have a lot of speakers, are going to be, um, large community items, uh, why we are bound by the start time for that. So I appreciate the response to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Mayor Protem, if there are no further comments, what's the desire of council on this item?
Move the recommended action.
Can I get a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, we have a first and a second. May I get a vote?
Councilwoman, um, Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Perillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Um, Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turan?
Yes.
And Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There be no further business on the agenda, and without any objection from any council member, we adjourn. Thank you.